We will now convene this August 7, 2025, meeting of the Centerville Town Council. We'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America, in the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next up, council, we have agenda review, and other than that, man, this is a long agenda. I don't have any changes or corrections. Does anybody else have any changes to the agenda?
I have a request for an addition to it, if I may.
Oh, my, yeah.
Um, yeah, oh, my. The net effect will be favorable, I think. So, new business items B and C deal with the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And I would like to add an item there to entertain a work session to discuss this. I think that the slide deck that we will be presented with tonight is a great overview and a starting point. But I, for one, I've got a lot of questions that don't necessarily yield an answer, but lead to a conversation. And I think a work session would be good to dive in deeper beyond what we see in the slide deck tonight.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, we've talked a lot this year about the need to spend some time outside these meetings, getting some work done as a group, so let's get that scheduled after we hear these presentations.
I think we're at an inflection point, and we really need to think some things through.
Sounds good.
All right, so we'll add that as a C prime.
Yeah. Sounds good. Any other changes or additions? Or, I mean, feel free to take stuff off, too, but...
Nope, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none, we will move on to the review of past meeting minutes. You have them in your packet. You were sent them in advance. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or any additions or corrections?
I just have one small one.
Okay.
Let me just find it real quick. Oh, it's on, well, page two, relating to my reports. It says the grant program called Tree, it says Tree to Shore, is Treat the Shore.
Oh, treat, the.
That's all, very minor.
Sorry. Be the shore.
The shore.
Okay, so the only change is two to the.
Right, correct.
Okay. Got it.
We'll be correct.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Is corrected?
I make a motion.
Give a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we'll have a citizens forum. Citizens are requested to keep their comments to three minutes. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council? All right. Next up, we have a couple of appearances. First, we have Ashley Durant for a Family Fun Day road closure request.
Hello.
You've got to come on up to the microphone.
That'd be great, yeah.
In the big chair.
Yeah.
Everyone lights up for us.
This feels so much better. Standing.
Okay.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Ashley. I'm a board member of Tides of Grace. It's a local nonprofit that is just bringing kindness and compassion to the shore through whatever way we kind of see fit. In August, it is the, I always get the date wrong, 16th, we are having a family fun day, and we're filling backpacks for 300 kids, just having moon bounces and things of that nature. We have two sides of Courseville we'll be using. We'll be using the Compass Building with permission from them. They will be closed. And we're using the Harvest Alliance Church across the street. Fun, everything's been fine and good. We have the insurance. We have all the things locked up. We were a little bit concerned about public safety for crossing the street. Last year, we had about 300 members come to this event with lots of little kids involved, and we were wondering if we could get permission to shut down from the bank parking lot to Comet, because the only areas that would be directly impacted are the two buildings that we are using with permission, and they will be closed that day. So I didn't know if that was an option. I talked to Chief Hobbs, and he said coming here was probably the best option for that.
Sure, I would love if Chief Hobbs was here, because I do have a public safety question, but we do have Lieutenant Harris, so if you could come up. So I'm, I mean, I love Tides of Grace, largely fine with this. My only concern is that street is the only traffic light to exit the shopping center, so it does impact far more than those
Because it's at McDonald's, yes.
two businesses, so if you're...
And all the businesses on Comet would have to go through the private property parking lot to get to their businesses.
Right, through the shopping center to get...
Through the food line.
That's a complication.
To enter, and that's there, correct. So Comet Drive, that is a busy intersection right there, off Courseville, coming into Comet. We could set an officer out there to help assist crossing if needed, but to shut the road down, I think that's a little beyond our scope, because like we said, we're going to inconvenience a whole lot of people trying to cut through the food line parking lot to get to and from their businesses for hospice, for the processing plant.
I'd almost rather have a police officer out there to help people safely cross. We talked about this before, and I said I was fine with it, and I, but then hearing it, that it's the only place where the traffic light is. Like, I know for me, if I'm leaving the hardware store, I go to the traffic light rather than trying to make a turn out of the...
McDonald's.
And I think if we just help facilitate people crossing the street, that's better than actually having people hang out in the street, because we got somebody that's not paying attention. There is potential for them just to turn in there, because that's what they're so used to. So I think if we just facilitate crossing at times when they need to, would be better than just completely shutting the road down.
All right, so let's commit to have, we always have an officer in that area pretty much anyway, but let's commit to having someone on Comet Drive, or whatever it's called, Courseville.
If we get sent the details, we'll be able to assign an officer to that,
Okay.
and strictly have them specifically for you all to assist back and forth.
Okay.
So, and if...
Email Chief Hobbs as well? For you guys. No, we, what's, Lieutenant Harris has got it.
Yeah, you can just email me. I'll give you my business card.
We have the form.
We have the form.
Yeah, we have our special events form. We can send you.
But is that, are you guys amenable to that, an officer to assist?
Work for you, too. Yes. Okay. I was just checking. They were there last year, and I wasn't.
Listen, we're doing this live here, so...
Too good of an offer to turn down.
Right, I appreciate you guys so much.
Yeah, well, thank you, and thanks for all you do for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a fan favorite. Mary Margaret Goodwin to talk about the 250th anniversary and some updates on that important work.
Is it on?
It's on.
It's on. Is it on?
Yep.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to sit down.
Yeah.
Let me start by saying, nine years ago, when Commissioner Jack Wilson and three other guys and myself left from Centerville in February of 2016 and did the reenactment of the 1776 march from here to North Hampton, being the first people defending in the Revolutionary War from Maryland and going against the British in Virginia. I never thought that I would get my wish, that I came back from that with this plan for 2026, but it's happening. The biggest battle in the beginning of the war happened on the 27th of August, 1776. Many people, sadly not enough, know the phrase, "The Maryland 400." No, they also don't know about Washington's Immortals, the group of Marylanders who saved George Washington from being taken by the British, captured, and taken by ship to England and hung. Had that battle been successful for the British in terms of capturing Washington, there would not have been a Revolutionary War. One of the people who was in that battle was from Centerville, Samuel Turbot Wright. He was also one of the ones who had marched initially in February 1776 to North Hampton, Virginia. So, as I began to look more into his life, he was, first of all, captured in that battle. He was put in a British prison ship, which was literally a hellhole. He came out of it in horrific shape, but when you consider that 11,000 men died in those eight British prison ships, he came home and did phenomenal business, because he came back and Centerville was just beginning. Our first town council meetings were just as he was getting home. He was on the town council. At the same time, a position as Register of Wills became available, and he went to that while he was still on the town council. Then, when the Clerk of the Court became open, he became Clerk of the Court. And most of you know what a major position Clerk of the Court is. It was then and still is. He was also living on his father-in-law's property, raising cattle, selling the cattle in Baltimore. He read the story about the British attacking again in Virginia in, I forget the exact date. But in any case, he wrote to his cousin, who was now the governor, Robert Wright, and said, "All of our Revolutionary War equipment is gone, and all of our men are tired, so we need urgently to prepare, because the British are coming back again." And his cousin said, "Be in my office tomorrow at 3 o'clock. You will be the Adjutant General." And he became the Adjutant General. So we now are in a position where he has really taken on all of these jobs, and still, to this day, nobody ever sought to honor him. Some families have put plaques out here at the courthouse to honor their family member, but nobody has ever honored this man who came and, under such ill circumstances, did so much work. Clerk of the Court for more than 14 years, one of the longest times. So I decided we're going to do this. And I will tell you that the plaque is drop-dead gorgeous. It's not like anything that's out there. And it has a picture on the bronze plaque of the prison ship itself. We have a ceremony set up 6:00 PM on Wednesday, 27th of August. Unfortunately, Ashley cannot be there. Sandy is going to speak for the town council. Laura Cook will speak for the Register of Wills. Catherine Hager will speak for the Clerk of the Court, which she is. And Adjutant General Janine will be here to speak as Adjutant General today. Now, one of the things that, you know me very well, how much I'm quietly giggling a little, because when I look back at Samuel Turbot Wright, all the positions that he held are all women. What a difference, what a change, what a very big change in all of these years, and hard fought. But I didn't want to stop just with that, because the best book about that battle and the best book on the Revolutionary War is done by Patrick O'Donnell called Washington's Immortals. Sold a whole lot of books. He will be our guest speaker, and he will, I don't know for how long, but he will speak as long as he wants. There will be chairs set up. I need to know how many of you are coming, because I only have a certain number of chairs. Every chair will have a name card. If you are a speaker, as Sandy is, then you will sit up on the stage. But the commissioners will be here, our county prosecutor will be here. All of the legal system will be visiting. And a lot of people from Kent Island will be here, because a lot of the effort for that group that went to be with Washington did their training down on Kent Island. So I've involved the Heritage Society, but the two groups that I have combined, all of the effort, not only for myself, but the Historical Society here in town and the American Legion. And they're supplying all the chairs and the speaker system. So all of this is planned down to the nth degree. And I will say that I've had phenomenal help from the county as well, two individuals in particular. But I'm very proud of this particular event, which really launches, it launches our 2026 effort. Now, you've had this calendar. Nobody's complained about it yet. I've been waiting for somebody to say, "Oh, well, what's that about? What's this about? What are you doing here?" Well...
We all trust you, Mary Margaret, so...
What?
We all trust you.
I'd beware of that. I've added something, and it's a really, really big deal. The 21st of December, which is a Sunday afternoon, in the auditorium at the high school, and I'm expecting an audience of about 200. I will tell a story about the Revolutionary War and how one of the major facts that's rarely ever been mentioned and has never been made a point about, that we would have, could have lost Yorktown. If you've seen my Facebook posts, you might have seen how much we fed the Yorktown Revolutionary soldiers, not only from Queen Anne's County, but specifically from Centerville. Two big properties with beef, because the French didn't eat pork. So it had to be beef, and we were growing it. And one of them was on Samuel's property. So there's just so much tying in. And that's what I want to say, and I'm going to come back to you in 2027, January, and talk to you about rebranding Centerville. This town grew out of the Revolutionary War, and we've never made a big deal about it at all. And we just let people go off to Chestertown, go to Easton. We have great stories, not the least of which is Thomas Jefferson as President of the United States. The one person that made the difference for him to become president came from Centerville. Got out of his sickbed, was taken in a wagon, stayed in the Capitol Room near the fireplace, so that not even, couldn't even, he was so sick, he couldn't even go into the group, into Congress. He had to be kept warm and then brought in at the last minute for the last vote. And it was his vote that broke the impasse. He just happened to be the son of Elizabeth Nicholson, who gave the courthouse. Again, people just don't know these great stories. So we need to think about at least using our history in tourism branding much better than we have. And I think the Historical Society is beginning to understand that now. Finally, the signage around town that we're now without. If you're going to have visitors, you need signs, and not the ones that we've had in the past. We need signs that stand up to the sun and to the weather. And aluminum is the answer. And you can now have pictures on aluminum signs and color on aluminum signs. But whether we, that's for a whole new decision six months from now. But what we need to think about is that we don't even have a website on the history of Centerville. So that is one of my aims. When I first talked to you all about doing this event for 2026, I told you that I wanted to redo the history project that we did for the Tricentennial of Queen Anne's County when we did a film. I found my copy, and I will be able to produce that at the end of this year of 2026, so that we can have it ready in 2027. So unless you have questions, that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I couldn't agree more, Mary Mar, I couldn't agree more relating to your heritage, your historical heritage is extremely important and economically as well, and we need to celebrate it and have that as part of our economic development, because it's major for our town. And the Heritage Trail signs, something that I'm very interested in.
Sandy, I'm sorry.
Can't hear me? Okay, well, we can always connect later. I would love that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up, we have two public hearings, so we will go into those. First up is a public hearing of the Centerville Town Council for Ordinance 082025, an ordinance of the Town Council of Centerville to amend Chapter 158, Vehicles Nonself-Propelled. I will now call Mr. Jim Beecham, council member, to provide background on this ordinance.
This is round two for this topic. We started several months ago with an ordinance that was intended to, I don't want to say standardized, but to make our neighborhoods more consistent from street to street, from block to block, to make sure that there's safety for pedestrians and vehicles, to make sure that everyone has a place to park their vehicle. We had a public hearing. We had a very robust response. We endeavored to make changes in response to comments made at that public hearing. And unfortunately, that process took us longer to get it right, longer than would allow us to carry forward with that original version. So this is round two with the thin-down language. It still prohibits trailers in the neighborhoods, but does allow periods of time for outfitting a trailer, configuring a trailer, whatever, and also for decommissioning at the end of use, whether it's a camper or a work trailer or whatever. So we took out all of the off-site requirements, so that's a lot cleaner now. We still have, we still have the desire to not have trailers semi-permanently parked on our residential streets, and that's what this is about.
Thank you. I will now call Gay Adams, Town Clerk, to present evidence, the published notice of this hearing.
This is to certify that the annexed legal advertisement has been published in the publications and insertions below. Ordinance 082025 was published in the Bay Times Record Observer on July 18, 2025.
Thank you. We will first hear from all those in favor of proposed Ordinance 082025, and then hear from those opposed. Please keep your comments to three minutes. You're welcome to provide written testimony to the town council as well. Gay, if you could read the public comment guidelines?
Welcome to this meeting of the Centerville Town Council. This is a public meeting, and we will welcome your participation. By attending, you acknowledge that this session is recorded and aired live on QAC TV. If you have a BreezeLine Streambox, this channel is now 2001. During the meeting, we ask that you turn your cell phones off and hold personal conversations outside the meeting room. The scheduled agenda is available on the information table just outside. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. The town council respects and appreciates your desire and right to convey your messages freely, and in keeping with the dignity of proceedings, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. If questions are part of your comments, we'll refer those to the appropriate individual. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from all those in favor of proposed Ordinance 082025. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the ordinance? Okay, we will now hear from all those opposed. Is there anyone here for that? Okay. The Centerville Town Council will consider all comments before making a final decision regarding the ordinance. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'll declare this hearing adjourned. Next up, we have another public hearing. This is a public hearing of the Centerville Town Council on Ordinance 10-2025 Administrative Search Warrants. This is an ordinance of the Town Council of Centerville to add a new chapter to entitled Administrative Search Warrants. I will provide some background here. We had an emergency version of this earlier this year related to administrative search warrants. It requires a building or property to propose, to pose an imminent risk to public safety or health, and then we would have to go to court and get a search warrant from the judge before we could enter the property. And the intention is to allow the inspector, the MDIA inspector, into properties that we think pose a risk to people outside of that property, or it could be, in the case of a rental unit, to people inside of the property. And so we went back and forth on... And so we went back and forth on this quite a bit in the emergency hearing. And this is the public hearing to make that a more permanent thing. The state law requires that we have this chapter to be able to go to the judge and get administrative search warrant. So it's a first step before a much larger hurdle to actually get a search warrant. I will now call Gay Adams, Town Clerk, to present evidence of the published notice of this hearing.
This is to certify that the annexed legal advertisement has been published in the publication and insertions below. Ordinance 10-2025 was published in the Bay Times Record Observer on July 18, 2025.
Awesome. We will first hear from all those in favor of proposed Ordinance 10-2025 and then hear from those opposed. Please keep your comments to three minutes. You're welcome to provide written testimony as well. We are not going to reread the public comment guidelines. They're the same thing they were three minutes ago. We will now hear from all those in favor of proposed Ordinance 10-2025. If there's anyone here for that. Okay, we will hear from all those opposing proposed Ordinance 10-2025. Okay. The Centerville Town Council will consider all comments before making decisions regarding proposed Ordinance 10-2025. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I now declare this hearing adjourned. Next up is the consideration of each of these things. We will start with Ordinance 082025. Councilmember Beecham, is there anything additional you'd like to say before we discuss and/or vote?
No, I think we've covered it pretty well. If we need to reflect on it, we can do so. If we think we're ready to make a decision, we can go forward with that.
I think we've made significant progress on this in making it more palatable. I think there was a lot of public outcry about the initial draft of this and none tonight. So that feels like a good sign. And, you know, initially, it had the components about fences and barriers. And that seemed to be largely what people were concerned about was the additional expense. I'm comfortable with it. I think we're going to have to do a lot of public education before we start any sort of robust enforcement. But I think it's a step in the right direction and puts us more in line with a lot of towns around us.
I'm going to miss the language about buggies and horses.
I thought we left it in.
No, it came out.
Eh, it came out.
I thought we tried to leave that in.
Eh, I know.
I think it was part of a very large sentence there.
Yeah, it got to be too much, so.
Gotcha.
We could have ended it back in on the fly. I don't think it would warrant another public hearing to do so.
Especially if horses and buggies become a problem.
Yeah, we'll be glad we took it out. All right, do we have a motion related to this ordinance?
I will move to approve Ordinance 082025.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we're going to do a roll call vote. We'll start down here, Councilmember Worth.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember President Keel. Yes, Councilmember Huffer. Councilmember Beecham. Great, all right. That means don't rush out of here at the end of the meeting. That's right. We've done things, we have things to sign.
We'll have things to sign.
All right, next up is consideration of Ordinance 10-2025, which I just gave the description of for administrative search warrants. Do we have any discussion or a motion related to this one?
I move that we approve Ordinance 10-2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote if there's no discussion. Okay, we're going to mix it up. Councilmember Beecham.
Yes.
Councilmember Huffer.
Yes.
Yes, Councilvice President Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Worth.
Yes.
Okay, great. Next up, under New Business, we have Karen Leffman, our Finance Director, with a memo regarding vendor payment processing procedures.
Hello.
Hi.
So since we transferred from Accufund to Bill.com with, to help with security fraud risk for the AP stuff. You know, currently, we approve the budget. Department heads approve the invoices. They're submitted to Finance. We run the checks. Before we mail them, we email you guys for three approvals, which sometimes we have a hard time getting. And I know you guys are super busy. So we're hoping we could change the process just slightly to remove the approval through email process. Still continue to send the check registers as we do. We are ensuring in the meantime that all purchases are either already approved in the budget or have come before council since the budget was approved to ask for special permission. So basically.
Signatures are on the checks.
Yours and Jeff's.
Yeah, so I don't want to take that step out. And I know I'm bad at responding to it. But we, to me, there either has to be a window, like a, this number of hours and then no response is approval.
And we could certainly do that as well, absolutely. We're just trying to.
Yeah, if you're still going to send it anyway, which needs to happen, I would like us to say, I don't know, what's reasonable, 48 or 72 hours? If you don't get three, if there's no objection, then go ahead, but.
And for us now, we don't cut the checks here. They're actually cut through Bill.com and sent directly from them. And then we pay their, they withdraw the funds from the account. So, and that was, you know, kind of the reasoning. But, you know, I'm down.
Yeah, so it's probably not our signatures on the checks. I would like there to be a window that we can object to a payment if we had to.
I'd like for council to be able to review checks before they're sent instead of after.
Yeah.
Just in case you have an issue.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't think you need the three votes, but I do think we need time to review in case someone's going to object for some reason or another. I mean, oftentimes, people have questions. So I think that's not unreasonable. Is that okay?
Yeah, is there a certain timeframe?
What's reasonable to you?
Could we do 40, like two days?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, and then, you know, because if we're sending it maybe on a Thursday, if we haven't gotten anything Friday afternoon, we could submit Monday morning kind of thing.
Yeah, that's totally.
48 hours is okay?
Yep. Awesome. So it's just a heads up that you no longer need the vote.
Yep, awesome.
And then just say that in the email as well, just to remind us. 48 hours.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And I'll, maybe we can just, I'll have her put a note in the email when she sends it, you know, just a reminder. Three approvals have to come back within, or I'll just start calling you.
Yeah, no, no, we're saying you don't need the three approvals.
Oh, okay.
Saying, give us 48 hours to object and ask questions.
Okay.
But you no longer need the three approvals. A lack of objection or questions means we approve.
We're good, okay.
Awesome.
It seems to me that having council have this review protects staff.
Yes.
Yeah.
It really is a good protection for staff.
Right, it's on us if there's errors.
That's right.
I appreciate that for sure. Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have wastewater treatment plant upgrade. You want to come on up?
Good evening. I know that wastewater is one of your favorite topics to discuss.
You joke, but it's a big one for us.
I know, and I take my job very, very seriously in keeping the water clean. But certainly not one of those fun subjects. So I appreciate the time. To give a short update on where we are with the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion. I'll talk about what we've completed, what we're focusing on now, the next steps, the cost estimate and funding. So we, as I had previously reported to the council, we had submitted a final preliminary engineering report to MDE for the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Funding, Grant Funding. They had come back unexpectedly and asked for some additional information to support why we had selected one of the three alternatives that we had presented in the report. So the membrane bioreactor is the option, you know, that's most amenable to extending the outfall into the Corsica River. Public perception as well as a technical, you know, there's a physical barrier with the membrane bioreactor. So we have submitted an amendment to the preliminary engineering report back to MDE. And we have answered a couple of email follow-ups on those as well. We've also completed the cold weather Corsica River water quality testing. And again, this was some recommended background testing of the Corsica River to get a baseline readings on the Corsica River in the cold weather as well as in warm weather. The warm weather sampling is going on now, which is the next page. So like I said, we applied to MDE's outstanding emails. It's back in their court. The other update is on the Corsica River mixing study. So this is a computer modeling of proposed outfall of a 1-MGD wastewater treatment plant, treated effluent going into the Corsica River. Through computer modeling, they determine the effects from bacterial and also a temperature effects on the Corsica from that additional outfall. We're also going, we are doing the warm weather testing right now in the Corsica River. Design is next. So this is a view of the head of the Corsica River. The blue line is a potential proposed alignment of an outfall that would extend out into the Corsica River. Previously, MDE had said that any outfall into the Corsica River would have to extend past the Watson, the name of the bridge, Watson.
Watson.
Watson Road Bridge.
Watson Road Bridge, yes.
I'm like, there's another bridge?
But it's very shallow out through there. And so through the computer modeling, they do have some preliminary results, but they're going to finalize those results next. And we're going to take that to MDE and DNR in the next six to eight weeks to discuss the results of that. So I only have preliminary results that I couldn't, couldn't share publicly yet. But you can see approximately where the blue line stops there at the end of Earl Creek. And somewhere between where that's pointing and the dredge channel is the optimal place for mixing, to have the effluent have the best outcome for the river, so.
That restricted shellfish area, is it existing restricted shellfish?
Existing, correct.
All right.
And again, the preliminary results that I saw with the membrane bioreactor, because it is such a fine filter, it even traps most of the bacteria. And that's what impacts the shellfish harvesting. So the MBR itself produces less bacteria going into the river. And putting the outfall there at the mouth of Earl Creek gives more mixing and dilution. So it quickly dissipates any bacteria that did actually make it past the MBR. So let me say, in the next six to eight weeks, we'll review that with MDE and DNR and get their feedback. And then we'll know if that's the viable point to move forward with for the outfall, the extension of the outfall.
Okay.
Any other questions on the, I'm trying to go quickly. So once we get the PER approved or sooner, we can start looking at designing facilities. I know Kip has reported before. You know, the treatment plant hasn't always met its discharge permit in the current status. You're over 80% of the capacity of the plant. We all know that we need something to move forward with, so. And then the next slide, the cost. And this was one thing that MDE asked us to put into the PER was the additional cost of the outfall extension into the overall cost. Wasn't clear why they wanted that. They aren't, I'm aware, that's not part of the funding, but they wanted that included. So I wanted to present that to the council. So if you do see a 50-plus million dollar number, that includes the outfall. And again, they're really two separate pieces. They always, always have been. And moving through all the different steps to get the outfall permitted are separate steps from getting the wastewater treatment plant upgraded and expanded steps, lots of steps, so.
Just a couple of questions on this slide. So where do the 30% contingency, is that normal? It seems a little bit high. So I've seen 20% to 25% contingencies, which I understand contingencies. So where do the 30%, where was that derived?
30% would be typical for our designs at this level, with this stage of design and developing of the facilities. I guess we have more unknowns and then more involved. But 30% would be typical for a preliminary engineering design phase.
And it applies to both components, the treatment plant and the outfall?
Yeah, the outfall, I would say, the actual construction of it should have a smaller than 30%. There's not as many moving parts with a pipeline as there are with a wastewater treatment plant with all of the different equipment and equipment selection and what other ancillary equipment may we, maybe we haven't thought of yet. So that's where the 30% contingency comes from.
And can you speak more to the escalation of the 4% per year?
I wish I could. I, 4% is a round number. And honestly, at this point, trying to, you know, envision what inflation is going to be next year or three years from now, seems like a very challenging position. So 4% is a little bit higher than the federal recommendation, but it's a round number is why, why we chose it. Real, honestly, it's, it's very difficult to tell what inflation will be, like I say, three years from now, so. Which is when we would be in the throes of constructing it if we designed today. So that's why I'm using three years.
Okay. Are you a question slide? Is it just questions?
I just have one more slide. And then I'll have a question slide, but you can always ask questions. I love questions.
Well, this slide has been pretty consistent as we've presented. We have our pretty, our standard funding sources. We are continuing to work with our grant managers and our lobbyists to come up with other sources of funding, whether it be federal, at the federal level or state level or local, obviously. So this slide is exactly as it's always been. Nothing has changed here. But if anyone has any ideas, we are more than okay.
All right.
Questions?
Okay. So some questions that I have, and we may, as far as again, a session that we may have later. But in the January discussion, there was discussions about options. And one is relates to still looking for a field as far as field irrigation. And that's totally not been discussed here. And that was an option that was discussed and it was going to continue to be looked at. Because with this, the outfall is over $14 million or more. So my recollection of looking for a farm was about the cost, okay? So 14 million, now we're up there. We're up to, for an outfall of 14 plus, you know, associated with the numbers. So I'm trying to understand why that's not still here in discussions or what was done since January, talking about, you know, that as another option. Because it wasn't just this option. It was going to be explored. And there was no discussion in your slide deck tonight about that. So.
Let me dovetail on that right quick.
Sure.
I've been an advocate of the outfall process. And, you know, I know that other council members have other opinions. And the cool thing is, is that we debate that respectfully. The 11 to $14 million price tag has me wondering if I was advocating for something impractical. So I do want to see this discussion continue about irrigation versus outfall just to make sure we're doing the right thing for the citizens of the town as well as the citizens of the community at large.
Absolutely. And I tell you, the other component besides purchasing land will be getting the wastewater to that land. And so that's another pipeline that would have to go.
No, I understand, yeah, right.
To that land. So that's, I mean, if you could buy. So that, that's, I mean, if you could buy theoretically a ten million dollar farm, but it was ten miles away, you're, you're still going to need another ten million dollars of, of pipeline to get...
So whatever that is, it's just, because I'm used to, when you're looking at from economics, you're showing your different options, like in a matrix. And you're saying, here's this one, here's this. And so, again, whoever's making the decision, they have all the information, the data. And so I just feel at this current stage, we don't have that information to make a just, you know, to understand the situation. And so that's kind of why I'm asking about it. And I think that's really important for all council members to understand that cost, you know, associated with it.
I think it's complicated by the fact that you had said earlier that the outfall, MDE wants to see the bioreactor membrane, where that may not apply to an irrigation system. So that comes into the cost differentiation as well.
Yeah.
It gets, it gets complicated.
Right.
And that's why I thought work session might be really important.
Exactly, yeah.
And the farm is not off the table at all. I think we've talked in the background about some varying options as it comes, as it comes to the farm. There are some other legislations that we also have to address as it relates to some of the options. So yes, I think, and agree that a work session so that we could talk through those options would be great.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Before we have a public conversation.
Yeah. And, and I can save my questions for that work session so we don't take more time up tonight, you know, relating to costs, grants, et cetera, funding. And I'm happy to do that at that work session.
Awesome.
Some urgency to that, if I may add. At one of our recent council meetings, we approved an expenditure for a rate study. And I think whatever numbers we're contemplating fold into that. And so I don't want to send that rate study down the wrong path before we can give it a little tighter focus. So that's giving it some urgency as well.
Yeah, I also think it would be wise to have this work session before the council turns over to brand new people. They need to get up to speed in October.
Absolutely. I think there's a sense of urgency around this.
Yeah, okay.
To have that work session to kind of just talk about all of it and what, you know, what council needs as it relates to, and as it relates to the plan. And are things paralleling? How long do they parallel? And then when do they come to one, it's like, now here's the moment of a decision needs to be made? So I think it's all that that's in front of us, strategically. So we understand technically what this means. Because tonight, you know, also there was the, a letter from Kip associated with the engineering studies, which was large, so.
Okay, so when do we have public hearings set in September already? The TND hearing is sometime in September?
Uh, the eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Yeah.
So we potentially have not a lot critical at the September fourth meeting?
Yeah, not a whole lot right now.
What if we came early and did a work session?
Prior.
Prior? Because it will likely be a pretty brief public meeting with no hearings.
And if the work session's dragging out, we could interrupt it?
Right, have a public meeting and then come back.
And then come back into work session.
Yeah. Could everyone do five-thirty on the fourth?
If I count.
Yes.
Carolyn, do you see any issue?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
We should be okay for the room, because we usually reserve it from like five to nine. So just in case we have close sessions.
I'm here, we'll be right here, because it's before public meetings.
We'll jump right into our public meeting.
We'll jump right into the public meeting. Okay. We'll dive in deeper on all of this September fourth.
Can you make that?
I know, I just, you said...
That'd be a good idea.
We're having a little sidebar.
Great, it's perfect.
Yeah, so, everybody's good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Appreciate that suggestion, Councilmember Beecham.
Sure.
Alright, next up, we have the design proposal. Is this urgent or should we wait until that work session? Neil, do we know if this is urgent?
Well, technically, it doesn't have to be urgent, I suppose, but we wanted to start, the proposed start date was September first, they approved tonight.
Oh, got it.
I'm looking at Dave.
What are, what are your thoughts? I mean, honestly?
Yeah, it's true.
Is it gonna derail the schedule if we hold off until after work session?
How about we discuss the agenda item and then decide?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
If it has an agenda item.
Okay, we're there.
We are.
Alright, so I'm going to present on behalf of Kip tonight. So council has been provided with Amendment Four to the original contract with Whitman, Ruckert and Associates with regard to the wastewater upgrade design. This amendment does cover the full design phase through preparation and contract construction documents, including review of submitted bid documents, recommendations for bid award, permit application submittals and, and permit application submittals to multiple regulatory agencies. The timeline right now is estimated at fourteen months with a proposed start date of September first, 2025, pending approval of this proposal. The total cost of this phase is two million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars, to be funded through the congressionally-directed spending grant in the amount of two million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which it also requires a twenty percent match from the town in the amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The match funds to be budgeted requesting in FY27 may include a combination of town funds as well as state sources through MDE, grants, et cetera. Just a important note that this scope does not include engineering for any infrastructure related to the new discharge. The staff recommends awarding contract amendment number four to Whitman, Ruckert and Associates in the amount of two million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade design. Any questions?
The two-point-four million, is that in addition to what has previously been contemplated or is that the approval of a layer of a number we had previously understood?
It's a number that we previously understood specifically for the design phase. So it's a part of the larger number.
So it has, the, the actual dollar value hasn't changed, it's just formalizing the approval of that phase?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And that's included in the estimated cost of fifty-five million?
Yes.
Okay, so it's included in that number?
It is included in the larger number.
I'm fine with this personally.
Can you imagine anything that we will discuss on September the fourth would change this?
It seems like a lot of the conversation is going to be more around the outfall than the actual design of the plant upgrade. So I don't personally think that anything that we would discuss would change the design phase of the project.
I have one question. The, the funding, the congressional, you know, directed spending grant, is this new money that you went and...
No, it's up, it's been on our, it's been on our funding list. CDS, you see the CDS in the...
Yeah, it's part of it.
So it's part, it's just, again, how it's described. So it's part of this, okay, so it's just that number. Okay, got it, thank you.
No problem. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to award the contract amendment number four with Whitman, Ruckert and Associates for the wastewater treatment plant design not to exceed two million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We have a discussion right quick?
Oh, yeah.
A question I had, where does the four hundred plus thousand go, come from?
So it will come somewhere between town funds. And then we also have our Bay Restoration MDE funding as well that we could use as a contributing factor to this.
So I don't think we have any of that budgeted this year?
It's for the twenty, it would be twenty-seven budget.
Alright, alright. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the findings of fact related to twenty-six forty-seven Centerville Road. This was the subject of a public hearing, I guess, last Tuesday. It's the address of the old mill building. I think we all know kind of what state that building is in and why we held that hearing and why we arrived at these findings of fact. I think we just have to make formal approval of this, correct?
Correct.
Is there any discussion or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the findings of fact concerning the mill property twenty-six forty-seven Centerville Road.
Okay.
Do we need to read the demolition order?
That's going to be a second vote.
In the motion? Okay, I'm sorry.
We're just on the findings of fact.
Okay.
Don't beat it up.
In sum, the findings of fact are that we did find it to be a dangerous building, that it does pose a risk to public safety if the structure is allowed to remain. That about sums it up.
Yep.
Alright, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, we're going to roll call vote on this. Councilmember Beecham?
Yes.
Councilmember Huffer?
Yes.
Yes, Council Vice President Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Worth?
Yes.
Okay. I take this super seriously as everyone else does up here. So we are, I will read the demolition order. For the good of anyone listening, that is what is next up. So related to those findings of fact, we have a demolition order before us, which states, upon consideration of the findings of fact, findings of fact attached hereto as Exhibit A, it is this seventh day of August, 2025, by the Centerville Town Council ordered that the owner and any other person having an interest in the property located at twenty-six forty-seven Centerville Road, Centerville, Maryland, shall demolish the structure located thereon as it is a dangerous building and a public nuisance pursuant to Chapter thirty-one of the Centerville Town Code within ten days of the date hereof. And ordered that in the event the owner or any other person having an interest in the property located at twenty-six forty-seven Centerville Road, Centerville, Maryland, fails to demolish the structure thereon within ten days of the date hereof, then the town may cause such structure to be demolished. Do we have a motion related to the demolition order?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're going to roll call vote this. Councilmember Worth?
Yes.
Council Vice President Keel?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Huffer?
Yes.
Councilmember Beecham?
Yes.
Okay. Lots of stuff to sign tonight, guys. Okay, next up is going to be a first reading of ordinance twelve dash twenty-two-five. This is amendment to Chapter one-seventy related to the TND, PUD standards. We had a work session, a really productive, I thought, good work session last Thursday, where we spent a few hours going page by page through the TND. And, and honestly, making a limited number of changes. I think the planning commission had done really, really good work to get it to a, a good place. And we had several discussions and made some significant changes, but not in the amount of them, just sort of in what they caused to do. So this is just a first reading. There will be a public hearing on September eighteenth, right?
Yes.
Is there anything else on this for tonight?
Yeah, it'll go to the planning commission for their approval.
Oh, yeah.
And there might be some minor things we found, what I've found so far, that we might have to...
Okay, great, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so it goes to the planning commission, so we refer this to the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes.
It just kind of happens on its own, yeah?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take it to the August, their August meeting.
But we don't have to vote to refer it to them, they just get it. Okay.
Right, yeah, their August twenty-first meeting, is that right? Their twentieth?
Twentieth.
Yeah, twentieth, right.
Okay, great. Next up, we have reports of boards and commissions, Maryland Municipal League.
So the MML has announced the, their fall conference already. It's going to be out at the Wisp Resort and Way, Western Maryland. It's a beautiful place to be. And the drive's nice to get there as well. So I'll actually call on Councilmember Huffer, she doesn't know that I'm doing this, because she attended an MLL event recently, maybe she could report on that.
No, it was very informative. I thought the sessions were really good. I thought there were a lot of good material that you can come back and as a town council member think about and process and see how, you know, could affect our town and our jobs and what we do up here. So I thought it was very effective. And, you know, I didn't have expectations that were high, so I wasn't disappointed, but I was actually pleasantly surprised about how good it was with that. So, you know, I would encourage to go. And, and I think as far as some things that come back, maybe we just kind of report out if any, any members go, like what are some of the key things, three things that you came away with? And that, you know, you think affects the town and that could help us in our governance of the town.
Okay. Great. Council of Governments.
Meeting next month.
That's it, just sometime in the month?
No, September tenth. Or, yep, September tenth.
Okay.
September tenth.
September tenth. And where?
County, I believe the county.
Liberty Building, yes.
I think the county is...
It's the county. I had to look at it.
Alright, so right here, Liberty Building. Okay, great. Economic development, we, I believe, have reached out to Bay Area Realtors for their person. I have reached out to the Arts Council for their person and haven't heard back, but we're working on getting those now, you know, statutory roles filled and then continuing to encourage the public to submit applications to serve on SITA. And we will put some focus on this this fall, as I've said a couple of times, once we get through the summer schedule. Park Advisory Board.
Yeah, the main thing, at our last meeting, I spoke about the Tree the Shore grant from Shore Rivers. And I met Jennifer Ricario this Monday to kind of go through the sites. First, the tree board, the suggestions associated with where trees should be planted in town, which I'll go through in a minute. But I did meet with her and just walked to, you know, all the different areas to see if she saw any issues or problems, et cetera. And the areas that were looked at, that were recommended by the tree board was Historic District, which I've talked about. There's four trees, existing tree wells, lawyers, and on Commerce that have just been lost. And there would be root barriers installed in those, for those trees. The second was Watson Road, three trees. So when you come, you know, on Watson Road, past the, the wharf, there's a tree line, it's just extending that tree line, which is just another gateway coming into town to just add additional tree canopy there. The third was the Mill Stream Two, which is on Commerce Street coming into town on the other side of town for the gateway coming in. The state property that we will get a deed for hopefully in the not-too-distant future. That is a property that we are going to be doing, you know, a massive water quality improvement project to treat, you know, forty-six acres as far as just the currently, as far as all the runoff that's going into Mill Stream. So this would just be kind of that first little step towards that to create a tree line there and just create some, again, some beautification coming into town of what's to come there. The next, and that would be, how many trees, I think, that was eight trees, if I didn't say that. Liberty and Water Street, that's where now is kind of like a, the town owns this land. It's parking. And there was a recommendation of seven trees there. There would be along the parking lot, on the alley, and then like two tree, two red buds, like on the side of Liberty Street.
The parking lot on the corner that we own?
Yeah, correct, correct.
I had mentioned it the last time, that I was okay with this with the exception of that property?
Right, right. So as far as just talking, as far as with all council members. So relating to just that. And then the next one was Pennsylvania Avenue, seven trees. There's a tree line already to bring that up. This is land that's already owned. It's extremely hot in that area. I was there, it's been two decades that the town has owned that land. And there was people trying to find shade and they were like down near the veterinarian's office trying to find shade. There was just a gentleman with a young person for some shade. So this would really just help as far as the heat in that area next to the sidewalk, the public sidewalk. And just to kind of cool it down and have some tree canopy there for residents who walk down that sidewalk. And it wouldn't be wasted with ever the town goes forward with that and has it developed, it's, it's not going to be wasted as far as what we're doing. Like I said, it's been like two decades that land has been sitting there like that. So the only cost to the town would be for tree barriers, about a thousand dollars for the tree barriers. It required per, or to be compliant as far as trees in town. And then the labor for the trees, the removal of debris, installing soil, all that, it would be provided by Shore Rivers. So it would be a contractor. And there would be some debris that would be required to be moved as far as stones, but basically they will move it and just, the town just needs to say, where do you want it? Where do you go to the farm? Where would you want that? So it's a total of thirty-four trees that will be planted.
So thirty-four thousand dollars for tree barriers?
Thousand.
Thousand for all of them?
Thousand for all of them, sorry, yeah, if I said that wrong. Thousands, very minimal cost for tree barriers. So a total of thirty-four trees that would be planted for tree canopy, you know, cooling, helping stormwater runoff and just shade for the residents as far as air quality, but just, again, increasing that tree canopy. um, as far as air quality, but just, again, increasing that tree canopy. So, those are the suggested areas. There was really no issue for Shore Rivers as far as doing this, and they would plant them in October, um, in the fall when the heat, you know, is all gone, and, and if there's any other details that we need to do from a town perspective. So, that's the detail associated with, um, the grant, just again, for full disclosure of what we're doing, just to get approval, um, from town council before moving forward.
I am personally opposed to spending anyone's money, ours or Shore Rivers or anyone's, on trees for that parking lot or Pennsylvania Avenue. I think we need to take a larger look at the town's real estate and what we envision doing with it. I, to me, planting trees at that little parking lot that as far as I'm concerned, the town needs to get rid of in some way or another, the intention was never to own it in perpetuity. We have a lot of real estate on our books, like a lot. I asked Carolyn to provide me a list last week, and I do have that. Um, I know some members of the Parks Board also don't wanna see trees planted on that corner and want us to look at what is different, what we could do differently with that corner instead of just, you know, kinda hiding it with trees. So, none of the other locations sound bad to me. I just think we have to have a larger, more comprehensive look at those two properties, the two parking lots essentially, Pennsylvania Avenue and Liberty Street. I walk down Pennsylvania Avenue almost every single day, so I agree it needs some help, but I think it needs more than a couple trees and that we need to really think about what it needs. Personally, I think we should be asking developers for bids of what they would do with those two spaces.
Yeah.
And I, I just don't know that we need to do anything to them in the meantime. So, I would be opposed to including those two properties, but overall fine with the rest.
If they weren't included in this cycle, could we ask at a subsequent time to address those two properties with the, the organization?
Uh, I mean, we can, and I don't disagree that we need to do a holistic, strategic, that will take some time. I don't disagree with that at all as far as looking at our inventory of land, what we wanna do, and have an RFP associated with those lots, so the town gets the development that they want. Um, but, you know, this, that's not gonna happen like, you know, soon. Um, and, like I said, these, these trees, it's, it's minimal on Liberty and Water, and then on Pennsylvania Avenue, those trees are not gonna go away. I mean, even with the development that would be there, it's along the sidewalk. So, um, so, again, I don't see it being a waste, um, and as far as just creating tree canopy in the town where it's extremely hot and doesn't look pleasant for residents.
Yeah, I don't see any problem putting tree, additional trees on Pennsylvania Avenue, but the, the parking lot that, you know, that's a little more iffy. There's, you know, very little space there anyway, so I think, you know.
I could acquiesce on Pennsylvania Avenue, but I'm, I personally don't wanna see us spend a dollar of our money or anyone else's making a single improvement to that parking lot on Liberty.
Right. I agree.
Then we have to have a vote, you know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the, the Parks Board and the town to go after this grant, accepting the property on Liberty Street. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is that it for Parks Board?
Uh, there's, yeah, there's the main things as far as we're talking, yeah.
Awesome. And the fishing derby is soon.
Yes. We've talked about that, and the fishing derby's all lined up, and as far as just getting some marketing associated with that, uh, we talked about that at the meeting, so, um, that's coming up and everything's getting lined up. So, I think really now, we have to market it. We have to make certain that, that, and also I think Courseco River Conservancy to see if they can help out. I think that was one of the things that was talked about, um, at the meeting as well, to make certain, to get additional assistance for it.
Awesome. And it's usually really well attended and a lot of fun, and
Yeah.
Maybe some, maybe someday my kids will catch a fish. We haven't seen that day yet.
And that's September 13th.
Alright, Planning Commission.
Oh, okay, um, let's see. At the Planning Commission meeting back in, uh, July, yeah, back in July 16th, they approved the, um, Draper Brothers' final site plan, and also the, um, GTI, um, uh, grow barn, um, on their existing, um, property. And they also, of course, reviewed the TND ordinance that sent it to us, which we discussed and made some changes last week. Um, at last night's work session, um, they reviewed the zoning map changes that are needed to comply with the comprehensive plan, um, uh, that we changed, map changes that we just, um, approved, um, a little while ago, and, um, they were wondering if there's been any progress about notifying the property owners about zoning changes. So, um, I guess I'll be working with town staff to figure that one out, and, uh, town attorney. Um, they, uh, also talked about their minutes, which, um, they plan on making them a lot simpler, not have all of the conversation.
Cause they're not minutes. They're transcripts.
Right, well, if you, yeah, they, they kinda went through the process of, well, how do they get like that? It's like, well, essentially, they start as a transcript, and then they kinda whittle it down a little bit. Well, it's like, no, they're gonna do it the other way around. Okay, so, um, so they'll basically just list action items as result of appearances, not all the back and forth of, you know, discussion, and also, um, they're not gonna summarize citizen comments because citizens couldn't correct them if they were not correct anyway. So, they're just going to say somebody spoke in favor or against, or, you know, generally what they were for. And also have a statement that the recording of the meeting is available upon request. So, if somebody really wanted to know all of the nitty gritty, that, those recordings would be available. And, and they're actually finished by eight o'clock, which is extremely rare for a Planning Commission work session, so.
Nice.
We were just wandering around the parking lot, wondering what to do. Still light out, so it's like, anyway, and that's, oh, yeah, um, they meet again, yeah, August 20th, so.
Great. Is that it?
Yes.
Wow, alright. Reports of department heads, town manager.
Let me go real quick. Um, we have received our communication plan from, um, Julie Parker Communications. We, um, sent back some department heads. Chief and I actually, I think, were the only ones who, um, gave comments, but we sent comments back to her. She sent us a revised one. Uh, department heads will review it again. Um, social media starter kit has been completed, and she's working on, um, just reviewing social media policy, so.
Can you send us the communication plan draft, too?
Sure.
Awesome.
Um, Janeele and Tanya and I met with our lobbyists today. We're talking more, uh, continue to talk about, um, funding for the wastewater treatment plant. Janeele and Tanya were first time brought into this, um, so they were a huge help with, um, information and giving information back to our, our lobbyists. Attended First Friday, Friday, which was a great event, um, attended National Night Out Tuesday night, which was a great event. I won't say anything. I'm sure chiefs take that. Um, and then I will be, for the first time, I'm going to Mako next week, so I'm kinda excited about that.
Nice.
They have some pretty cool classes I'm looking forward to going to. So, um, that's, that's it.
Awesome. Okay, chief of police.
Good evening, everyone. I come up here to, one, answer any questions the council may have, but, uh, also to thank the council for their due diligence and continuing to work with the town on amending and upgrading our code and charter. Uh, it is very difficult to enforce antiquated laws a lot of times. Uh, one of the things you all brought up this evening, obviously, is working on the trailers. You know, we, we've had many complaints in the town about the trailers being unhinged. I appreciate the, the council continuously working to get that rectified, uh, and it makes it easier for us to enforce at the end of the day. Um, one of the other code issues that the town manager and myself, along with, uh, the code enforcement officer, uh, have been working on is some of the abandoned vehicles in town. Now, there's been many complaints about the abandoned vehicles, how we can proceed to, I don't wanna say get rid of them, but make them less of a noise or get rid of the complaints in general. So, we are looking at our current code on that. There were some clarification that needed to be made before we can make enforcement efforts in that section, um, but we are doing our due diligence to get that clear.
Yeah, we may, we'll probably be coming to the council with some code changes to, some amendments to that code.
Yeah, so we can get some of that, uh, out of, off the agenda and get some of the complaints cleared up. Um, but other than that, uh, the monthly reviews for the police department will be given on the next meeting, September 4th, I believe it is. So, I'll include both the July and the August reports at that point in time. So, unless council has any questions for me.
Yeah, I'd love to hear more about National Night Out. I couldn't make it, so.
That is, was an outstanding event that evening. We had a very good turnout from the community, uh, along with First Friday as well, which, you know, town manager had already said. National Night Out, uh, we had probably a little less than we had last year, but the response was overwhelming. We got a lot of positive feedback for that evening. So, uh, I look forward to next year already, so.
Awesome. Where are we with staffing in the department right now? Are we fully staffed or no?
Yes and no. Um, so, we are fully staffed, however, we're getting ready to lose one officer, uh, due to, uh, their spouse moving with the military. So, they are soon to be, well, actually, they've already submitted the resignation. I think their last day is August 25th, and we've already processed an applicant to fulfill that spot.
Okay. And Crystal's doing an exit interview with that officer, I'd imagine?
I would assume. She's been given the copy of the resignation, so she'll probably set that up.
Alright, when's your next staff meeting for CPD?
Uh, we had one in May, I believe. So, we usually do it biannually, like full staff meeting. We, it is probably October.
Okay. Alright, let the town manager know when it is.
Perfect.
When you have a date.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief?
None here.
Um, before you arrived tonight, we had a request to close, I keep messing up what street it is.
First of all.
First of all, Drive.
Yes.
Um, and thankfully Lieutenant Harris was here and was able to discuss, but we committed to an officer being there instead of closing the street so we could keep the intersection open for public safety.
Yes.
We can make sure people cross the street. So, please make sure that we're there and we're good to go.
Of our guidance on the calendar.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Town attorney?
I have nothing new for you. I will make sure we note the September 4th, um, the September 4th workshop.
Okay, cool. Alright, um, town clerk?
Just, um, two things. Um, we had, August 4th was the deadline to apply for elections, so that has come and gone. Um, and so we have three candidates. Um, Monday, we meet with the FX Board to, um, review the applications, uh, to certify that the financials, everything's great, and then we'll meet with the board of our super, board, is it Supervisor Board of Elections?
Board of Supervisors of Elections, yeah.
I haven't gotten that date finalized yet with everyone, so once I have that, I'll let you guys know. I'll let you guys know when that is. Um, and then, um, next week is our last week with our intern that we've had. He'll be coming back to town hall. Um, we're gonna be, he's gonna finish up a project for me, um, for 2026, um, to coincide with the, the 250th anniversary of our founding. Um, so, I look forward to having him, and it's been a great to have him, and I, um, we'll do an exit interview with him and see how we can improve it, but it's been really well, he's been a great addition
He really has.
To the town, and he's been at every agency and contributed.
Oh, that's so cool.
So, um, he does, he did get accepted, University of Maryland, so that, that's where he will be going instead of Tulsa.
Very cool.
So.
So, do you anticipate doing that every year as far as getting a summer intern?
I would love to do it every year.
Mm-hmm.
I would love to. So, he, um, is our first one, so I'm just hoping that we can continue this every year. Again, I'll ask every year during budget, but, um, I know we can do, make it better, so I can't wait to hear from him.
Yeah.
But.
That's great.
No, I think that's great. I think developing that relationship with Chesapeake College, I think is, you know.
And the high school.
Yeah, and both, but I think from what I heard, you know, you, you were able, from Chesapeake College, you only got some candidates, so, so I think that's, that's something to continue, um, in, in developing that relationship with college as well.
Yeah, and we should do a proclamation or something for him from the council.
That's a good idea.
And let's make sure we're writing him a letter, a generic letter of reference, too, cause like, they're not gonna wanna call us back in a year or something necessarily, so.
Okay.
That was always helpful when I had internships in college, and you'd get some sort of generic. Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, Main Street manager. If that was all you had, Gay, I'm sorry.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I rarely have much, so.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
So, there is a, uh, one shooter in the package, and I didn't know whether you had any questions on that.
I was expecting to see numbers for Maryland Crafted in our packet. We had asked you for numbers.
Oh, um, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get that information.
We asked you the last time you presented to us.
So, I have coordinated with the, um, I'm sorry, I did not have that with me, but I can email it to you tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate this information. You know, I think being a Main Street has been great for the town, so where are we with the, the corner property, the Commerce Street and that grant?
That is still in flux.
Yes.
It's, I'm sorry, it's.
Still in flux?
In flux.
In flux.
Yes.
Okay.
We should have some, um, more distinct information in the next week or so.
Okay, okay.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, well.
I have another question. Alba, as far as this, any, any, as far as working with them?
Yes, I do have some information about that. So, um, there is not a signed contract on that property. Uh, there is a very interested, uh, per, tenant who is working with the property owner. Uh, we should see something on that, I'm gonna say, in a couple weeks. Uh, the gentleman did go to the Liquor Control, uh, Commission on Tuesday, and I met him there and I talked to him, but again, we don't have signed contracts yet, so it's always nice that we have someone interested. And, um, at that meeting, uh, he said that his intention was to have something opened, um, November, December.
Nice, okay.
Yeah, so we're rocking and rolling here.
So, I have one other question as far as market analysis plan, um, cause there was that that was approved, I think it was 25,000 as far as just the, the report. Um, so, could you, as far as the timeline for that report, are you in the middle of it now as far as providing information?
So, we just got the agreement
Okay.
For the grant. So, we'll be able to start on that. So, that sequence will be, uh, September to June. September of this year
Right.
Will be the initial start, and then it'll end June of next year.
So, report, so when, cause you actually have a third party come in to do that report, right?
Yes.
And then you provide them information, they generate the report.
Uh, no.
Am I getting that wrong?
They do data. They'll collect data while they're here.
Right, correct, yeah. But they'll do it over that whole timeframe?
Um, it'll be done before then, yes.
Okay, yeah. So, how long does it normally take? Sorry, I'm just not familiar with it. How long does it normally take?
So, this is the first time that we're doing it with, um, um, Main Street America.
Okay.
So, I can pull my, uh, they gave me a preliminary proposal for that that did give a timeline, so I can pull that information.
Yeah, just to kinda know, cause, yeah, just as far as seeing the timing of that, cause I think that also, again, depending on the timing, how they're ties in the SITA, cause that would be another tool associated.
That's what we did last time.
Business development, and, um, cause that report's about two, 10 years old, the, the prior report. Um, so, I just think it's an important, important, and as far as associated with how that comes together in time.
Why don't I put, um, kind of a summary of what that's anticipated in the next town out for the next meeting?
That would be great, yeah. I think that would be good, thank you.
Okay, great. And I'll get the information on Maryland Crafted in an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we will now go into our second citizens forum. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ryan Showalter.
You can get the handle, I'll pass it down to you.
Mid-Atlantic.
Handle it, Jeff, help.
I'll pass it down.
So, just a brief comment on the Mid-Atlantic, um, public state investments, which is the developer of land on the north side of Laser Drive across from, uh, Buckland Downs. We have a, a commercial shopping center that has received final site plan approval from the Planning Commission, and I've been working with town staff and town attorney to.
Into the microphone.
Okay.
Yeah. Just for the public.
Working with Sharon and talking to Kip, uh, to finalize a public works agreement, hopefully to come back before you in your September meeting for that agreement to be approved. And we're, we're down to one, uh, sticking point that is problematic, and And we're down to one sticking point that is problematic, and that deals with the water and sewer allocation for the project. And the, the challenge we have is with restaurants, and you'll see, we have a number of restaurant users who are committed, but the town has a policy for water and sewer allocations that requires EU allocations that are significantly more than the flows that these restaurants have at other locations in Easton, Denton, Annapolis. And so we've provided the town with one year worth of billing for each of these users, along with the seat count that they have in those existing restaurants to determine flow, you know, gallon per seat. And you can see, if, if we use actual flows for these existing uses within the, the area, the, the project needs fifteen EDUs. If we use the town standard, the project requires forty-three EDUs. And, and you have a policy in your, your code now that you do, you look at the wastewater flow a year after occupancy, and if what was required upfront overstates it, you provide a refund. The challenge is, all of our restaurant tenants have said, we're not, we're not coming to Centerville if we have to pay an extra several hundred thousand dollars upfront. Kip and I have discussed it, and he's basically said, look, you know, you need to go to the council. That's a decision for the council, not for me.
So it would require a code change, Carolyn?
Um, it wouldn't require a code change. It's in our capacity management plan that we use MDE's guidelines. I don't know that the, I can't remember if the guidelines actually say, you know, that it can, I think in the past, we have used data and then our public works agreements usually say, or actually everyone, we go back and look after a year, YMCA.
So either direction, they could owe us more EDU.
Correct.
Or.
Correct.
And, and we're willing to take that risk, and, and we understand you're working on, you know, new policies. You, your capacity charges may change. So if, if they increase and we find that the flow, you know, the water use is actually greater, they would have to pay extra and pay whatever your current rate is at that time. And that, that's a risk we're certainly willing to take.
I don't, I don't find this to be unreasonable. I guess if it's based on actual flows from other locations.
Yeah, it'd be good to see some backup data, you know.
Yeah, like, probably we would need some proof.
We provided the raw data to, to Kip.
Okay.
But he says we need to act on it.
He, I don't think he felt comfortable making the decision of, of saying, going from this number to this number and just asked.
So I think, I would, I know Kip's out, I would love to get a recommendation from him, I just, is he okay with this, do you think?
Uh, he is.
I know he's watching this meeting.
I actually asked, he is watching right now, but I, I actually had emailed him and I actually have a, a draft which I didn't know went through that said, hey, Ashley, I'm sending this to you as a, it's up, sorry about that, I just saw it's in draft. I did ask him about that, um.
While you're looking that up, I will note here, correct me if I'm wrong, but in your DB, TBD, to be determined spaces, you have accepted the MDE recommended numbers just because you don't have any other numbers. So the bottom one, for instance, the lot B.
Yes, the bottom one is, is, we don't have tenants.
Right.
And so we've used MDE's number for retail space for that.
Right, there, there are what, three spaces, three places where you've done that, or just the ones in red in that final column?
All of the retail space. So we have Advance Auto Parts and Verizon, we've used the, the MDE or town standards. It's really just the restaurant use.
Right.
Which is significant.
And right, so we treat a Dairy Queen the same as we do a sushi restaurant?
You do.
That's wild, okay.
Right.
Yeah, it's just, the, the guidelines are just restaurant, yeah.
No, no, I, yeah, like.
Yeah.
I understand this isn't before you for a vote, but my goal would be to, to have a public works agreement finalized next month, and we just, we're hoping that you could provide some input.
Listen, no, I appreciate you being here. We don't know what we don't know.
Right.
Honestly, it was like, why is he here? Can't wait to see what happens as soon as they come. So, yeah.
Move on this tonight?
I don't see why we couldn't.
I mean, I, I think it's reasonable. I think it's, you know, associated, again, we have the data, Kip has the data, you know, because you get to the same endpoint. I mean, because you, you're going to pay what you should pay.
These are all.
So.
Things that we, that they have other locations nearby.
Yeah, they're not foreign.
Yeah, I mean, this is basically a copy paste of Denton Plaza, so this isn't like.
Well, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the recommended fifteen EDUs until data within our, our policy might prove otherwise.
Yes.
Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you for your time.
All right, so yeah, direct public work staff to do what they need to do. Thank you, thank you for bringing it to our attention. We don't know what we don't know.
Thank you.
All right. Any other citizens that wish to address the council? Okay, council roundtable, council vice president Keel.
I have nothing.
All right, council member Beecham.
So as our town clerk has pointed out, there were three people that have submitted their application to run for town council. I am one of them. I submitted my paperwork back in May, was it? My intention is, if the other two make it through the ethics board and the board of supervisors of election, that's not the right term.
That is.
Okay, all right.
You nailed it.
Then I intend to withdraw.
Oh, wow, okay.
But let's get those two through. And my intention is to withdraw. I've served for ten years, and you asked, how do you get ten years out of a three-year term? Some of us remember it was a painful one-year holdover where I held over for an extra year outside of being elected, so it was, we had a spoiled election that really spoiled a lot. So it's been a good ten years.
Thank you for all you've done for the town.
Thank you.
And going to miss having you up here, Jim, so. All right, let's hope everyone that wants to serve gets through that ethics review.
That's right.
It's an interesting week ahead. I'm just kidding, I think it's all going to be fine. All right, anything else, council member Beecham?
No, that's it.